Foot lot, so a very narrow but long deep lot. Does need all the clean out, foundation work maybe necessary, HVAC, electrical and plumbing upgrades for a licensed plumber and electrician, and kind of the typical upgrades needed before occupancy and transfer deed to the property. We do currently have one bid for the property in the amount of $500.
Okay. Counsel, you guys have any questions on that? Okay, just to reiterate, there's only one bid on that for $500, so those of you that are interested, make sure you come on down to City Hall, put a bid in, and again, it's going to make somebody a lovely home.
I did want to ask one question. Eric, as far as other communities, are there any special programs out there that they're using in order to try and get these homes to people that owner occupied, live, going to live in them, sweat equity kind of stuff? I've heard of other communities that have packages where, you know, people will come in, they partner with tradesmen or unions, and they get help learning how to take care of a home or remodel it.
We've done that with Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission where they've worked to, I guess, get owner occupied, there's some conditions that it has to be owner occupied, worked with the school on getting their trades program, and I know that house had some issues as they got further into it, but that is something we've communicated with the school.
Is this something that we could look at doing on a broader scale? Because I know we sell a lot of these homes, could maybe more of them go into that type of program?
It's, as long as they're able or capable. I know they have limited capacity on the school based on their students and spring and summer, or spring and fall time schedule, and Regional Planning actually would like to come, I think, last meeting in July and give an update and timeframe on possibly moving forward with another project as well.
All right, sounds good, thanks.
We're good? Number four, consideration of a sale of property locally known as 918 Locust Street, City of Burlington, Iowa with conditions. Mr. Tisland.
This one's located at the corner of Locust and 10th Street. Between Cedar and Locust, it is a single-family home based on zoning. Appeared previously to, I guess, historically been used as some sort of commercial building, but has been transferred and currently is a single-family home, built around 1870, two-story brick home, three-bedroom, one and a half bathroom, does have an attached garage. As I mentioned, it would, zoning does require to be a single-family home, there is an option or possibility for a home occupation in this property, just based on the setup. Looked like it may have been a market or some sort of retail historically, but it currently would have to be a home occupation in order to operate it that way and get approval through the process. Again, needs plumbing, electrical upgrades, HVAC, general maintenance cleanup of the property. We currently have one bid in the amount of $1,000 for this property.
All right. Counsel?
No questions.
Okay.
With these properties, we did have open houses last week, had a few people through, tried to drive a little more traffic to it in the newspaper and through our Facebook page, having events to encourage more people to become aware of these.
I think we're going to have a good auction. This is going to be fantastic, I think, of those people that want to look at that one. Can you put that picture just a couple more times? I just want people to be able to see the possibilities. I can just see so many things happening right there, it's going to be phenomenal, so looking forward to that. Those of you that want to get a piece of that action, please, we encourage you to come on down to City Hall and put a bid in, and we'll be taking care of those next week. Okay, number five, consideration of a permanent encroachment agreement with Historic Tama LLC for encroachment into city right-of-way adjacent to the property located at 300 to 310 Jefferson Street, Burlington, Iowa.
This is essentially a transfer of ownership for the encroachment. This property previously under the previous owner got a, received an encroachment permit for stairway access on the east side of the building going into the basement, so this follows the same requirements as that, but our policy requires an update to the current owner once, if there's transfer or sale, which is Historic Tama LLC with Doug Wells being the manager. This includes a stairway access into the basement of the property that was historically there, that has already been constructed, it's covered currently, but would also include some railings north and south of the stairway, and then a railing along the stairway access.
Okay. Counsel, do you guys have any problems with that? Nope? Everybody's good? Okay. Number six, public hearing, consideration of plans and specs for the 2018 Mason Road Shared Use Path Project. Mr. McGregor.
The plans and specs, Eric will be throwing up a PowerPoint here. It is a, the plans and specs for a 10-foot wide shared use path from the edge of where it ends at Sequoia currently, there's a current trail there, and it will go along Mason Road until it hits the current sidewalk at Haskell. I think I hit most of it there. I'm going to go to the money part. So the estimated project costs are 264, the budget amount is 292,000. This is a DOT project because it is transportation alternatives programming through the DOT, so it won't be let locally here. It's on schedule to be let in September, awarded in October. That timeframe doesn't give a lot of time for a contractor to get done with construction prior to kind of the end of construction season, so our thoughts on it is to have a late start date of April 1st, so it gives the contractor the option should they want to try and get it in, yet this fall they can, or start next spring. It's been more favorable for us for bidding purposes, so that's the reason why you see that kind of later start date than normal. It would be nice to get it in this fall during the fall school year, but just with construction and the DOT process.
Questions?
None, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Number seven, I might say you might as well stay there. Public hearing, consideration of plans and specs for the 2018 DeEdmond and Gladys White Park renovations.
This project is something that has kind of been engineering, has designed it, but it's more of a Parks and Rec project. The plans and specs are to do some grading work and then also asphalt removal, and then the money, I guess, is an estimated project cost of 70,000, and I'll let Eric talk to you about the money, the revenue, or the source of where it's coming from.
We did have starke funds designated for this project, we did apply for a Walmart Foundation grant and did receive that for a 50/50 match, so estimated 112,500 project. We originally had the playfield and concrete work around $35,000, so we'll see how this comes out, whether there's some changes that need to be made. The overall project, plan for the project is shown on this diagram. Taking out the existing basketball court here on the west side, resurfacing or doing some improvements to the existing basketball court, restriping that, and then having a new concrete entrance to the playground, and this is the location of the shelter, and a new playground in that general area. So this is one component of taking out the existing court and asphalt in the area, and then adding in the new concrete, and then separate phases will be the playground and doing the resealing on the existing court. Originally, I think the estimates were a little lower than this when we were working with Public Works, so they came in a little bit higher, so we'll see where bids come back, whether we need to change.
There's some pretty significant infrastructure underneath there, it's pretty, looks pretty basic, but underneath there's a lot of combined sewer systems and a lot of drainage intakes that are involved, so to try and get all those to match up with the grading and the proper shape of the surface, that's why engineering got involved, just to make sure everything was appropriate moving forward.
Quick question. If you say that, the plumbing and infrastructure underneath that area, is that stuff that's all been upgraded?
That is, that is part of future potential separation areas, so...
So we're going to put this in and then we're going to tear it out?
The grass area potentially, as we're moving forward in our future CSO renegotiation conversation, I don't know where this, where this lies, I guess, for separation. I think it might be the ability to put some sort of detention tank in there, but until we do that, I don't really know what it's going to entail.
Does it make sense to try and move up whatever work that we would do in that area to correspond with this project so that we're not ripping out this?
Unfortunately, it's kind of towards the tail end of the one basin. I mean, you're talking about millions of dollars worth of work that's coming at us, and depending on the way that the renegotiation goes, this could be 20 years down the road. I don't, I don't know what our renegotiation looks like, unfortunately. I mean, if we get on our current path, it would, it would be somewhere we have to separate, and I don't, I don't know what that separation entails here. It might just be where we put sewer lines inside of the combined system, it might mean full ripping out and putting in storm, but that doesn't necessarily mean that this would be all torn up. So I hate to give you a non-answer through that, but I don't, I don't know what it entails for us.
What's our, what's our, what's the city's cost on this project, again, estimated city's cost on this again?
Seventy.
Well, the match amount, the grant was 50/50 matched, 112,500 is the total project, so 50, bad doing math offhand, 6,000 approximately is the city's starke fund and what the Walmart contribution is.
If, if it's possible, and I know it's really tough, but I'd really like to have a best case and a worst case scenario for the timeline as to whether or not, when this work would have to take place. Because if we're talking about something where there's the potential for this to take place in five years...
That's worst-case scenarios, and within five years, we'll be in there potentially doing something. But yet again, I don't know what we'd be doing, because it's hard to understand from an engineering standpoint where you'd be taking some of those lines. I mean, there's, there's probably three or four lines cutting through that property. It comes to a Y and then it cuts across, so best-case scenario is, is we don't have to do anything, but I, I don't know the way that all plays out.
Yeah, if there wasn't any grant money involved, I'd probably, probably want to wait, but...
We did shift some of the locations of the concrete work to avoid some of the intakes so that potentially, there might be no impact at all, even if they do work in there, it's just getting into the grass here, it's not affecting the concrete or asphalt, but as Nick mentioned, until they get there.
We're taking those steps, as long as we're taking those steps. I don't want to, I don't want to put this in and make it look great and then turn around five years and rip it all out, next thing you know, it's patchwork back together.
Yeah, I foresee, if anything, it's, it, most of the work that I'm talking about is in the open area, so at the worst, it's tearing up some dirt and some grass and reshaping it, so, which we'd have to do anyway.
Yep. All right, thanks.
Okay, you guys good? Okay, number eight, resolution awarding contract for the 2018 Public Works Roof Replacement Project. Mr. McGregor?
I knew it was right after. The resolution in front of you, we just did bid openings last week, is to award bid for the re-roofing of the Public Works Department. This is the project that has kind of grown over the last couple of years with the leaks and the problems that we're seeing out of Public Works. The facility was built in 2001, it is a, it's a ballasted roof, and we have air conditioning units on there, anytime we get up there and work, we probably, we cause more problems. We bid it out as a TPO-type surface. The lowest bidder was Brockway Mechanical at 237,650, which is well under the estimate of 270, so that's good to see. We are using the road use tax funds and then sewer fund money, split 50/50 to pay for the cost.
Questions?
Nope. Dispersed it.
Number nine, resolution awarding contract for the 2018 1106 Washington Street Drainage Improvements. Mr. Mack?
The resolution in front of you would award bid for the work being done on the former Dress Rand site. As you know, we replaced and tore out a bunch of concrete, causing some drainage issues just because of the lack of soil in that area. To be able to get that to drain properly, we're going to put a, we're going to put a drainage pipe in there and re-grade it. The bids came in pretty favorable. Fi excavating was the low bidder at 19,078.13. My recommendation would be to award to them, and the sewer funds is how we're going to pay for that.
You guys have any questions?
No questions.
All right, sounds good. Number 10, resolution awarding contract for the 2018 Patterson Street Erosion Repair Project. Mr. McGregor?
The resolution in front of you would award contract for the Patterson Street Erosion Control Improvements. This project has been a long-going project to try and replace Patterson Road that was damaged in, I think, 2016 in September, we had a pretty heavy rainfall then, it actually washed out the whole hillside. We have since purchased the property on the underside of the hill, rather than doing a Gabion wall or a retaining wall type project, that was in the estimate of, you know, 150, 200,000. The purchase of the property was, I think, 35,000, and then the, the awarded contract, if going to the low bidder, would be 71,984.50. So it would be, you know, a little over 100,000 to fix the issue, and then we can repair the road and have access for the people up top.
Maintenance, we're just cutting grass?
Yeah, to just be seeded.
So if, the, the estimate is that berm will, will do suffice, it will do the job?
Correct.
Okay. When you say it's seeded, are we cutting it or are we just letting it grow? Because we've talked about urban pores.
Most of that hillside is currently wooded or treed, and it does not get cut now. The slope prevents that. The slope that we're going to create is three to one, which is still fairly steep to mow. It is city property, I don't know, foresee how that probably transpires. I mean, it can be mowed, probably won't be mowed as often as a yard, but could be mowed, you know, once or twice a season.
Okay. We're good?
Yes.
Okay. Brings us to number 11, resolution approving distribution of 350,000 of funds for parking spaces at the Greater Burlington Area Sports Facilities Indoor Turf Project adjacent to the Recplex.
So, this is sort of a follow-up to a few other resolutions that have been considered on this topic. Counsel had set aside 500,000 to do parking improvements, inclusive of some parking improvements on, on the city's property, adjacent to the Recplex, to add some, well, additional parking in that area, the northwest, no, southeast corner, if I get my directions right, of where our existing surface parking is. We were looking at doing parking over on their side, on the indoor facility side, after their project was done. One of the things that's come up is the idea of incorporating all of the parking on that side into the original project, and us providing them the equivalent amount of money. We'd looked, had net engineer's estimate in that 350,000 range to do that additional contemplated parking. The resolution you see before you is allowing the 350,000 to go to the indoor rec facility committee to do the work within their project and meet what we've previously agreed to as a counsel. Jason, I think you're going to kind of review how they are going to accommodate that parking into the, the work they're looking to do.
Yeah, thank you, Jim. Jason Hutchison, tonight is Treasurer of the Greater Burlington Area Sports Facilities. That's the original drawing that we originally took to you in terms of having that parking on the west side against that extension of Broadway, and one of the things we heard from you is, we want to see more parking on that end so that it will be more heavily used by the Recplex, so if you want to put the... So this is a preliminary drawing of widening that I think it comes close to tripling the amount of spaces that we originally proposed on that side of it. There will also be an additional sidewalk. The engineers are putting the final touches on that tonight, so I don't have it for you tonight, but it will be in your council packets for next week in terms of what we intend to do. So we would like to incorporate everything that's in red with construction this fall. Unfortunately, we don't have enough for all, money for all of the parking on the south side of that facility, but we'll at least have hard surface parking when it opens, if you release those dollars for what hopes to be early next year, perhaps January.
So the red portion is 350,000?
Yeah, along with an additional sidewalk that's attached to there, and it, it, it may not use the entire 350,000, but that's what we're planning on doing, at least with the original construction.
What's the other 150,000 going?
The other 150,000 would be about the cost of what we'd looked at, I don't know if you have a copy of the drawing, but we had shown it at a previous meeting, the parking that we need straight west of the parking shown here. In the grassy area, if you think about where the grass is, where a lot of people park during heavy use events down there, this is adding parking there, and it kind of reflects the idea that we know we're going to lose some of the parking that occurs in that grassy area now, as the road gets extended south.
Yeah.
We need to some way mitigate that lost parking, and the estimate we had, I think, was about 120,000. The 150 gives a little bit of leeway, depending on what happens with, with bids and timing, but by the time we get to where we are, we're actually going out to bids on a project.
So then, if there's money left, do we shift it to them to go towards the parking on the south side of the structure?
That would, I guess, be a question to you. I think we're going to be pretty close to using about that 150,000 though.
Okay. I mean, that's fine. I was, I guess I wasn't aware that we were splitting the parking, but perhaps that's, was that direction that we hit?
Yeah, that's, that's what I recall.
Okay. I thought we were going to try and keep it on that same spot. No, I'm fine with it, I just...
Now, the, when, I know Jason, or Jason, not Jason, Nick presented, I think, the stuff, and maybe it's Jesse, for what they looked at for the parking numbers a month and a half ago, and you saw some estimates given up for some of the different portions of parking to be done, what it would take to get it accomplished, and it did outline about 120,000 for the parking on our side, and the 350,000 range for the work, pretty comparable work amount to what you see listed here.
Okay.
Questions?
Some of the flexibility that was in that original resolution, talked about using towards amenities or infrastructure on the exterior of the facility, the 350,000 being turned over here, you may not have exactly 350,000 with the cost with this parking itself, but it's there and available to do some of the other exterior work that goes along with, with the work to be done. Okay, thanks.
Any questions?
Everybody's good? Okay, number 12 is resolution approving purchase of a brush chipper for the Parks Department. Mr. Tisland?
This is in the CIP for FY19 at 75,000. We previously had received a quote for that amount with taking into account two trade-ins, a chipper and tree spade, and so based on, I guess, the amount of cost has come before council, we do have a scheduled opening this Thursday and anticipate still meeting that 75,000, but we'll fill in the remaining information on, for the council packet, but would anticipate meeting that budgeted amount.
Questions?
None.
Number 13 is resolution approving re-rig Pacific for carts for solid waste park.
So, we have three different resolutions on here that are going to be associated with this conversion, we'll have to have another one at the following meeting as well. The quote you have in the book, or in the packet outlines the purchase of an estimated, what, 10,000 carts, 9,500?
9,500.
So I have a question on the number, because it's 10,000 carts, but 95 are being assembled and distributed, is that because you have 500 that you're looking to hold in reserve?
Well, we have a list of active accounts that is approximately 9,300, they have another list of inactive accounts, which we estimate to be another couple, 2, 300, putting us around 95, 9,600 counts that we are aware of that would have services from the city for garbage collection, so that would give us somewhere in the neighborhood of maybe up to 400 carts, but until we actually get out there, we don't really know. So, the resolution that was put forth, the, the cost estimate is based on 10,000 total carts. Of course, that you wanted three different sized carts, we could only do the best we could is estimate what we think, how many are going to be 35s, how many are going to be 65s, how many are going to be 95s. We kind of base that on experiences in other communities. Davenport probably most closely parallels what we're doing here with a tiered program, different prices for the different sized carts. You talked about a $4 trash tag, believing that the $4 trash tag would encourage people who are looking at the 35 to realize that an extra bag during a one-month period would cost them more for that trash tag than if they were to take the step up to the 65. So, RARIG put together a quote based on 10% being 35 gallons, 60% being the 65, which is the core, it's the fallback position, and then another 20%, or 30% for the 95s, but where they will fall, we won't know until we do the survey, have people select the size cart, and then there may be a few houses out there that are going to want more than one cart.
Does it make sense just to send the survey out first and figure out where we sit on the carts?
Well, the order will not be placed until we get the survey completed.
These figures are just based off of the estimate.
Yes.
Don, do we have to call it a survey? We got kind of roasted on that term, can we call it?
Well, they call it a mailer slash survey.
Preference mailer or something. Anything, anything but survey, please.
Okay, my, my only concern was, you know, we ordered 1,000 35 gallon carts, well, if we need 2,000, I don't want to have to worry about spending more money on that.
I've talked with them, and as I said, they said, well, we will take a look at the results, what we get back, and we can fine-tune the actual order when we get those numbers back. Of course, the issue, of course, again, is you allow citizens to exchange from their original cart to, oh, I'd rather have a larger cart, oh, I'd rather have a smaller cart, and that hasn't been actually stated for sure how we want to do that, but whether you want to assign a fee to that or let them do it free of charge, most of the communities we've surveyed, sorry, most of the ones we've surveyed have indicated that...
We still love you, Don.
They don't charge for the first 30 or 60 days. We've even seen communities that allow up to six months for the citizen to decide, oh, I don't want that size cart, I'm going to take this other size cart, and you exchange it. Of course, you're taking this used cart back, and you can't give it back to the person or the company that sold it to, and so now you have that cart in inventory, and if you don't have a cart already in inventory to give them what they are asking for, then you have to get that. So there's going to be a lot of jostling, or potential for jostling, and we're going to do our best to try to get people to select the cart that best sits, suits their situation when they, before they vote on what they want to do.
I don't suppose there's, there's no way to track who was using tags by residents?
No.
You guys never track that?
No.
That, that wouldn't help us at all, okay.
Now, are the carts stamped with their address on them, so the trading, switching off would be nightmare?
No. No, each cart has a serial number on it, and that serial number is written down, associated with a specific address to which it's delivered to, but there's no, other than a paper trail, there's no connection that this cart was that house.
Because I think just letting people switch back and forth could be nightmarish for your department.
Typically, after a certain time period, then you say, if you wish to change the carts, you can, but it's going to cost you some money upfront in order to do that.
I'd like to see us, I'd like to see us look into what the, what the fee structure would be, because I do think we need to think about the manpower that's going to take to switch these out, and also, is it going to be just on request, or is it going to be at certain periods, you know, at certain times of the year, quarterly or wherever, where, you know, people can go through and say, hey, I want to make that change, I think that may make things a little bit easier, just, you know, just throwing that out there as far as an idea for...
I thought, one of the things we discussed was the $35 fee for the switch.
I remember us talking about that, too.
The only time we would waive that is if a person was moving household, so if they were going from one household to another, and they had originally had that larger can, they would have the option then at that point to switch that out.
Right. Most places have it such as if you're new to that specific residence, the cart stays with the residence, you move, your cart remains with it, because that's the cart assigned to that address, and as you said, when you move into that residence, that may not be the size cart that you want, and from what we've determined, most communities, if not all, allow the new resident at that residence to decide, I'd like to change it without cost to them.
Any other questions for Don?
No, I have a pure timetable, there's an interest, of course, when all this can take place. If the council moves through and approves the, at least the first two resolutions, that would mean that next Tuesday a week from tomorrow, we'd be in a position to issue a purchase order to RARIG to per... a purchase order to RERIG to perform the mailer survey services, and then we would turn over to them the list of the residences. They would send mail to that list of addresses, the questionnaire, which would lay out basically the choices that the resident has and the cost associated with that, which is always interesting and always difficult. I don't really know how we achieve that, but if we don't actually know how many thirty-fives at this price unit, unit price we are gonna be buying, and how many at this unit price, and how many at that, how do you determine what your overall costs are and what that price should be? But city manager's given you some numbers in past meetings. That would be on that mailer that would go out, so they would know, basically, I want this size, and this is what I would be paying on my monthly water bill. Then they indicate that with that information provided to them on that Tuesday, that on Monday, the thirteenth of August, they would have the mailer, after going back and forth between us, looking at the language, looking how it's laid out, then it would be sent to the addresses. It would also be on the website. So people could make their selection associated with their address on the website, or they could send a hard copy back and say, this is the size I want. We'd leave that survey open until Saturday, September seventh, at which time then it would be closed. And then subsequently, about seventeen days later, they are indicating that they will have the carts ordered based on the numbers received back on the survey, and actually be here in Burlington to start delivering the carts to the addresses as, as indicated on their survey, what size they wanted. And within two weeks, they'd have the delivery done. So based on their timetable, they're saying that we would have our carts in the, our customers' hands by Saturday, October sixth. If you'd go to the next one. Okay, the program that we're looking at is three sizes of wheeled carts, so thirty-five to sixty-five to ninety-five. Historically, they claim that they have about fifty percent of the residents contacted with the mailer survey do not bother replying. And if they don't have a reply, then the dedicated, designated container is gonna be the sixty-five. So if what they say holds up true, at least fifty percent of our customers will have a sixty-five gallon container due to the lack of response by them. Next one. So, in an effort to try to encourage the proper selection, we're going to set up, hopefully sometime after next week with the council approving everything, we'll set up some cart inspection sites. If you remember, I've had three carts here before, so you could visually see them. This, again, we'll have these set up before, well before the mailers would actually even go out for the people to reply and select. Next one. We're talking about putting one out, a three, a set of three out of Public Works on Division Street. For people who don't know where it is, it's thirty-five, ten Division Street. It's a parking lot entrance is on the right side of Division as you're driving away westward on, away from Roosevelt. It's about point one-five miles from Roosevelt. And they have visitor parking near the front door, so it's readily accessible, easy for the customer. That will be one site. Next one. The other site, second site we're talking about is using the public library. Most people in Burlington know where the library is, at six-twelve North Third Street, and the parking's set up there. And then the third site, this is somewhat not easily accessible. It's at the wastewater plant where I'm located, at the administration building. It's one-oh-one South Street is our physical address. It's on the riverfront. It's at the toll of the railroad bridge. We have a certainly circular parking lot in front. Why would someone choose to go there as opposed to the much easier accessible areas? Number one, we do have a ramp which would simulate a slope driveway if people are worried about dragging a cart up and down a slope. We do have a ramp into the building, so they could take the cart outside and roll it up and down the ramp. We also have, in addition to that, we also have four concrete stairs. I've received telephone calls wanting to know, well, what's it like wheeling these carts around on stairs? I've got stairs. How difficult is that gonna be going from one size container, container to the other? And then push that up a little bit, Eric. And lastly, program contacts are there. I'm the one that's been working on the program along with my office coordinator, Julie, and we have tons and tons of information. We can answer questions. We've been putting together a frequently asked question and answer sheet. We're gonna distribute those amongst the different sites, so if people do see somebody sitting there near the carts, that person would have that sheet with them. But if you wanna go to the horse's mouth, you're gonna wanna, we're gonna have telephone numbers. We'll have information with the carts. Some people have come down to the plant and taken a tape measure and measured them to see how big they are and whether they fit in their dedicated spot that they wanna put them, and we'll have that information with the carts. But if you want the straight scoop, you'd be coming down to the wastewater plant, or you would be contacting us by way of phone. And again, they're not set up yet, but I hope to have them set up sometime early to mid next week, so people can start going out. And yet, the mailer is not intended to go out for another three weeks after that. So, it'll, people will have plenty of time. And my intent is to have some bags with material in it, the white bags, the, the black thirty-three gallon bags, so they can put them in the carts, and they can see what they feel like and how they handle. Gee, I normally have two black thirty-three gallon bags. Is that gonna fit in the thirty-five, or do I have to go to that size? Try to encourage them to look closely, so they do choose the size they need.
Questions? We're good?
Way to be accessible, Don. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Don?
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment?
Not tonight, sir. This is just the work session. But next week, we'll be talking about during the council meeting, we'll be having public comments.
Okay, doesn't make sense.
Number, number fourteen, while I got you there, is resolution approving RERIG Pacific for survey coordination and processing proposal for solid waste program.
This is separate from the first, which was for the containers themselves, and for the assembly and delivery to the various properties of those containers. Of course, again, that order is gonna be based on this mailer survey results. The second resolution is authorizing them to do that survey in mailer. They'll set up a website. Like I said, they'll be sending hard copies out, and that will result in a final list of addresses and size of carts desired at each of those addresses. And then that list then will be used by the people on the first resolution to make the deliveries in that two-week window.
We're good on that, guys?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Don. Number fifteen is a resolution approving the retrofitting of the fleet of the Burlington Iowa Solid Waste Rearload Packers by Kilburg Equipment LLC with cart tippers. Don?
We went out and received two quotes from two companies that I'm familiar with that sell packers and tippers and install the tippers. Excuse me, the cart tippers are necessary in order to handle these carts that we're switching to. Most people, or a lot of people, are used to seeing the truck with what I call the claw that goes out to the side and grabs the cart, and a man doesn't get out of the cart or out of the truck to dump the cart unless the resident hasn't pushed, positioned the cart in the wrong right place, or someone's parked the vehicle in the way. The other way to tip the carts is using a cart tipper, which fits on the hopper area of a rearload truck. Our entire fleet are rearload trucks. We're gonna have those retrofitted, so that they each have two tippers on the back. I know that's been expressed a desire. Well, can we go to fully automated, which is the claw? I am still looking into that. I'm discussing with the truck people what would be involved with that. There are different designs of the claw, and there's one particular design that's intended to be used in close quarters, which would be necessary for many of the alleys in which we operate, and not necessarily all of them. But I am looking that, into that, but that's gonna take some time. In the meantime, we want to retrofit our existing rearloads with cart tippers, and this resolution is recommending the awarding of the purchase and installation to Kilburg Equipment LLC of Sebula, Iowa.
Questions?
No, sir.
Sebula.
Okay. All right, to the proposed consent resolution.
I do wanna put with this, another item that does need to get done, and I mentioned it before, we're gonna have to get a rate structure in place. That resolution, I think you have planned, Stephanie, for the next work session and council meeting. So the first council meeting in August would have that on it. When we talked about this, the rates that we had been talking about, thirty-five gallon at fourteen-twenty-five, the same as what our rates were going to anyway for the main program, sixty-five gallon at seventeen dollars and fifty cents, the ninety-five gallon for twenty dollars and seventy-five cents. Talked about that, that, the ability to use that extra trash tag. So, similar to what we're doing now, right now, we have trash tags that were the two dollars for the, our, the way our program is set up now. As we transfer to the new system, we'd be going to, transitioning to a new sticker that would be at a cost of four dollars for the new system. Also having the ability to purchase or have on a monthly basis additional containers, an additional sixty-five gallon container for eight dollars a month, additional ninety-five gallon container for twelve dollars a month. And the cart change-out fee that we, that, at least what I had in my spreadsheet, and maybe it was the thirty-five dollars that we talked about, and I just didn't get it changed, but I had thirty dollars in there.
I thought it was thirty-five.
Either one of those is fine.
Yeah, I remember thirty-five.
So those will all be components that will be on that fee structure. With carts being delivered the first week of October, the new rates would go into place November one. So, did, everyone would, even if they have the carts, I mean, hopefully, we're doing that in a way that we get the carts there prior to it. They're paying the, the standard fee, using the existing tags until November one. November one, they'd have to switch out, and we kinda talked about with having the two-dollar tags, you have, still have those. As we transition to the new program, you're required to use two after that November one timeframe.
So no one's gonna get stuck with a tag?
No one will be stuck with a tag. Some of our extra, and this is something that Don will have to work on as time goes on, if there's a desire to see a change in pricing for the pickup of other bulky items, or if we just maintain that the way it is. Changing the, I mean, we'll see, have to see what happens with, how people subscribe to the program in terms of what container sizes they're using. Changing the, having a thirty-five gallon container at the fourteen-twenty-five, the one risk that there is with that when you have a capital cost here for this conversion totaling five hundred and, I got off of the sheet where I had that written down.
Change.
Five hundred and seventy-five thousand. That's, that's a big thing to overcome if you don't get a lot of people signing up on the, the higher cart sizes or enough. We do have seven hundred thousand of carryover funds, or about that neighborhood of carryover funds at the end of this year. Waiting until we get through the next, the, getting the accounts balanced out on a accrual basis. We can use, so we do have cash to cover a lot of items, but we also, this next year, have a purchase of a, of another
Truck.
in there, and that's in the two hundred thousand range. So, we have the potential not to have enough cash to handle it. My recommendation, I mean, we had talked about, or looked at the idea of potentially doing a finance on this. I hate to finance this when we do have a lot of cash on hand, but I still do have a concern about where our cash is on this. So, you had the one-point-two million from the Manor. I'm trying to figure out how to make the different projects that we have go. We put five hundred thousand that's been committed to the indoor rec facility. So there is still seven hundred thousand to be used on different items. I'd like to put about a hundred thousand out of that. I'd recommend putting a hundred thousand out of that into this fund to help make this program go.
Okay.
And not get us into a position where we're in trouble with our cash balance.
Is this something that has to be decided right now?
Nope, but I want you to be thinking about this.
Is there any reason why we can't wait to see where we end up numbers-wise on these carts before we make that decision?
I think that part of it, you, we have a few different projects that we have to clean up. And I, so I want you to keep these in mind. Parking, the, we did the two parking lots that we had set, we had, I think, about a hundred and ten thousand dollars that's sitting in cash on hand, and we have, the project costs were about a hundred and seventy-ish, a hundred and eighty. So we need to be able to cover that deficit.
I'm good now with the hundred thousand. I'm good.
We do have some funds that are, I mean, this is where I'm trying to balance out different things. We did the demo down in the Park, Parkview Care Center, that we have to make sure that we get that balanced out. We have funds in local option sales tax where we had budgeted aside for a bus and had some, some, some extra there, because we got one additional bus funded with grant funds and what we'd originally budgeted. So we can help to make those other two projects go, but I need to make sure we take care of that. And the final item that, that I know of, that there's some prior commitment on here, is last summer, we committed to help, trying to help with a, with a parking solution for the two buildings downtown being purchased. We continue to wait for that group to be able to, I mean, they have closed on the properties. They now have them. And they're, they have a request to come to us, but they're still trying to modify what's the best use of what their request is of us on that. So that, that commitment that we said that we would help with that parking need still needs to be addressed, too. Those, those are the things that I know of, that this is the only funding source I can tell you that is available to make happen. So I, that's where I just want you to have an understanding of.
No, I like having the reserve money from.
And putting some money in, out of that, into this on this, the solid waste. I don't want solid waste, if we can avoid it, to be at zero dollars. I mean, it doesn't need to have seven hundred thousand in it, but it, if you're dealing with a, with a fund that is two-point-four million dollars, or two million, a little over two million of revenue annually, you should have, and, and you have equipment that you gotta purchase every other year. When you're entering that year where you're having to buy that piece of equipment, you should have about four, four hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand sitting there.
I think it's just really hard to give a good idea as to where it's gonna be.
We don't know, we don't know where the revenue's gonna be long-term, but I think that just to make sure that we don't hear cash too low, I'd like to commit some portion of cash to this. Now, as time goes on, we can also say, we do need to be cognizant, depends on where subscriptions come in, what does it mean for rates in ongoing years on, on the different components? And there may be some adjustments that have to be made. That's, I, I think that's just, until we know where the, where it all shakes out, that's just a, an unknown how future years line out. That's all I wanted to get out.
Is that all, James?
That's all.
All right. Appreciate it. Okay, to the proposed consent, number one, resolution awarding contract for the two thousand eighteen port of Burlington heating and cooling unit. Mr. McGregor?
Good evening again. Maybe I'm out of order, but one of my other duties in the community is I'm a sergeant-at-arms in Kiwanis, and we have a fellow Kiwani in here.
You're totally out of it.
And I will note for public record that the fellow Kiwani's cellphone did go off during a meeting, so that'd be a five-dollar fine on Thursday.
Can you point him out, please?
Mr. Dave Weemer. Please put that in the paper, too, so it's a double fine.
Thank you, sir, for bringing this up.
Sorry, I just have to pick on you since I see you here. Don't, don't hand me anything now.
That is noted and appreciated, my friend.
The resolution in front of you would purchase a new air conditioning unit on top of the port. The current one went kaput. It has been there for twenty-eight years. We've we've limped it along for a while, but unfortunately, we have to replace it.
What happened to the old one, Nick?
It went kaputts, that's not a technical term or anything.
I was just gonna see if you could.
It kind of flows out of me once in a while.
I was talking to you, James.
We did, per our purchasing policy, we went out and got quotes, our old refrigeration was the lowest at twenty-one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, unbudgeted item, but it would come out of the port budget, which is a general fund item unless Mr. Frenow has another recommendation on that, so.
You guys good?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, both of you, both hats. Number two, resolution awarding the ID for complete production and delivery of a 2019 Type One ambulance for the Burlington Fire Department.
Okay, that, there's a typo in there, should be the bid.
It should be what?
The bid.
The bid.
The bid.
All right.
Should be a B in front of that ID.
Okay.
So.
The ID, the bid.
My resolution says the bid on it.
Okay.
So, yeah, so I hit the resolution for a 2019 Type One ambulance. We sent four bid packages out to four ambulance builders after our committee met for, I think I asked Jim back in January or something, when could we receive an ambulance, he's like, anytime after July first, so we were kind of hoping to get it in the works and get it after, right after July first, but we looked around at different ambulances, kind of messed with our specs and then we ended up going right back to the specs that we had from before, so some things weren't gonna work out like we had, we had thought we could move some stuff around, so we ended up using the same specification as last time, other than we added in that power, the power loading system.
Sweet.
So, those were, there are two bids here that we got, one from Alexis Fire Equipment and one from Clocky Emergency Vehicles, Alexis was two hundred and forty-nine thousand and sixty-seven dollars and Clocky's was two hundred and forty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-six. So that's actually over the amount that I put in our budget, I put two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars and I based that off of our previous amount, which was one ninety-five and then I'd asked the, it was what we paid back in 2016 for an ambulance and I asked him if we were gonna add the power load, you know, system, about what would we be to and he said about two hundred and forty-one thousand, so that's, I mean, when we, when I asked in the budget time, I was making a good faith estimate, I didn't actually go on to get quotes for that, but I do feel good about the quotes we, we did get, I, back last summer, a lot of the fire chiefs around Iowa were asking, you know, what are you paying for ambulances, so I have a lot of things to compare it to, anybody that was getting the power load system in a brand-new cot, they were anywhere from two hundred and forty-eight thousand in, let's see, what town was that, two hundred and forty-eight thousand in Altoona, Des Moines was two hundred and ninety-five thousand, so we're under all of those, Knoxville was, or Johnson was two hundred and seventy-two thousand, so there's different things they could have been doing with their ambulances, I'm not sure why theirs were so much more than ours, but they were similar, Type One, four-wheel drive with the, with the power load system in a cot, so.
What's the, how long are we keeping this, what's the criteria on, on keeping this ambulance, is it mileage, is it years?
Normally it's, well, it's, we would like to say we could keep them till they have two hundred, three hundred thousand miles, but the last few that we have here, we're really going off the maintenance costs, when they start to get where you're repairing them too often, or they're unreliable or we're sending them to Peoria or the Quad Cities to get repairs on a regular basis and we, we quit running those. And we switched our chassis, so we went from a medium duty, that's what it's called, it's like a, a heavy-duty, bigger rig chassis and they, it sounded like a good idea and I think a lot of people were doing it at the time, we found out maintenance costs are higher, the chassis cost is higher, the ride is awful in there, I know Councilman Rinker can attest to the Fords, I mean, he probably didn't ride in the other country, he didn't have much to, oh, did he?
I did.
Okay.
Yep.
So you're killing me, we're giving you blood.
The Type One pickup type chassis, they ride so much better.
And they're more durable.
And they're more durable and in here in my memo to Jim, and I've mentioned, I think, to the council before, we're looking at, after we get, this will be our third pickup type chassis, eventually we'll just do remounts, instead of buying a whole new ambulance, you just remount the chassis and Lifeline, who, well, this is sold through Clocky, but it's a Lifeline ambulance, they're made in Sumner, Iowa, they've quoted us about a hundred and fifty thousand to remount, so basically they take our old box, pick it up, drive the Ford chassis away, put a new Ford or Dodge or whoever makes the chassis back in there, so you save somewhere around eighty, ninety, hundred thousand, I don't know, we're talking five years down the road, what that savings will be, but quite, quite a bit on those. The other bidder here, Alexis, they had quoted two hundred and fifteen thousand in the future to do a remount of that ambulance, so.
So Chief, which, which, are you, when you get, when you get this new ambulance, are we retiring one of the old ambulances or are we holding reserve, are you gonna sell it or what do we do there?
Well, we've just always got rid of an ambulance, so that's kind of what we were thinking, now we're thinking, may, I, I'm not sure, I don't think we'll sell it right away, we'll probably hold on to one, the last ambulance we sold, we, we could hardly get anything for it, it's the one sitting out by Holt Camps, he bought that ambulance from us, you know, and so.
And the one, the one that you would take out, is that the 2002?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the most likely, but we're actually alternating that somewhat, that one right above it, the seven fifty-two, the 2007, that's kind of our station three, normally they use the Chevy, but again, they've both got a lot of miles on them and they, they have issues, the seven fifty-four is the one that we, it's set up as a bariatric unit, so it has the bigger cot, the winch, the ramps, however, this new ambulance with the power load system, it'll take a patient seven hundred and fifty pounds plus the weight of the cot, so that should almost cover every bariatric call that we have with that without taking out this special rig, so. I can answer that for sure if we'll retire, we, we probably will end up doing that.
And just until something big breaks down, then it doesn't make sense to fix it, right?
Right, yeah, yeah, I think we got eight thousand dollars out of that last ambulance, so, I mean, it's eight thousand dollars, but there are, there has been times here where we've like, I kind of wish we had that rig to use as a backup, we actually went out there and Nathan Holt Camp was nice enough to let us take some parts off of that one and put on our.
We better make sure we got backup, Chief.
Yeah, so.
You guys, you still, you still going there, are we good?
I'm, I'm.
Come get me with one of the new ones if I'm in any trouble.
Oh, okay.
The breakdowns, I don't want them.
Don't come get me in any of them.
There's a huge difference, huge difference between the new, 'cause I had the opportunity to ride in both and I can remember being in the back of the old one and we hit a bump and that thing, from the time we hit the bump, the time we got back to the firehouse, it didn't stop going up and down, like the shocks were just shot and it, it was just, the ride so much different.
They weren't shot, that's the thing, that's how they were pretty much since day one.
Regardless, I can tell you, if I'm having a baby in the back of that thing or a broken leg or having a heart attack.
If you're having a baby in the back of that thing, brother, we got more jobs in shock.
Just talking about patients in general, the last thing I wanna do is ride, ride that ambulance, so.
All right, before this turns ugly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Are we good?
Yeah, I think so.
All right, just keep breaking from having a baby today.
He has plenty, he has plenty of kids, I think he understands how it works.
Our first discussion item, Riverfront Advisory Committee Annual Report. Mr. Walsh.
Charlie Walsh, Burlington. Each year, we try and get up here and talk to you all, looking at the council, we've had two members that are past council or committee members, so John and Matt, they know how we've operated in the past and we are still doing the same. You've heard me talk about the buoys, we got thirty thousand dollars, Jim said, in our account, we had, don't know, he's looking at me like, maybe not, we're counting on that, trying to get new ones put in, we'll need nine of them. You've asked us before, it's our responsibility to come up with an idea, how you put them in, how you take them off, that's not our committee, you have the expertise of what equipment you need, who's out there to do it, so we'll let you all decide on doing that.
And those are the new wake buoys?
Yeah, speed, speed wake. We'll be putting, Matt did the talking on this at our committee about a concrete block, which is about one ton, I think, and put chains and cables on it, so we should not be able to have to take them out, but who knows what the river will do, we've had, what, two five-hundred-year floods in the last ten years, so we'll see what happens there. Outer Island, the lease, we've had the committee work on proposing a new lease that you all have approved, that hits, taking time, working on that, the visitors' docks that we got grant for, for about forty-two thousand and then the, help me, Stiders, who donated?
Schrader.
Schrader, yeah, thank you, donated memorial fund of their son that finished off paying for, so we had those in, now with the seawall that is put up, they did remove the ramp portion of it, that has been installed now and the docks have not been installed, we have all the poles in, they should be in the water, yes, I know we have high water, but they all go in by cranes and they should be able to be put in, July is here, we have a short season for boating, October, that'll be pretty much done. Flood mitigation, we've worked on that, Matt was our designated person on the committee, so if you have any questions, he's your expert, he can help you get all the information you need, he did report to us that twenty-six million dollars on the flood mitigation, we know that there's north, south, in, east, west, two ends are open, doesn't make sense until it gets finished, you gotta continue working on that. We are talking, we have been talking about a new park on the south end of where the south boat ramps used to be, there's a little white building down there that the city owns, we've, will be making a recommendation to you with drawings and then you'll have to probably go and talk to the railroad and get some land back, so you have your work cut out for you, we'll be there supporting you. The railroad is not our friend, I know you all have different opinions, but the riverfront is our biggest asset that Burlington has and these people on our committee are dedicated to that, so we want you to be dedicated as much as we are to it, you're a site, live and work and play, that's what we stand for also, so, any questions?
My, my only comment would be, Charlie, is that outstanding work by, by your committee and also the Parks Department, that Riverfront Park, I'm telling you what, anybody has to drive down the bluff, that park is used more than people realize, it is fantastic, you know, and the other work as far as putting the buoys out and also working on the public docks, thank you for your efforts, you're right, it is our jewel, we take it for granted, our visitors don't, so we need to capitalize on it, so thank you.
I do.
Thanks, thanks.
Thank you.
I wanted to just follow up with a couple pieces of snippet information to what Charlie had said about the buoys, so I did a ton of research on this before I was elected and basically I called and spoke to the Coast Guard in St. Louis and tried to figure out what we could do to make it as least, least amount of maintenance, if we put a one-ton concrete block on there, he told me that if you get a, he used to have like a half-inch steel cable line, you put a hundred feet, he said, you'll, you can leave it in there year-round, said, want us to take it out, so that was kind of when, if I'd have been giving this presentation, that would have been the route that we would have probably been trying to push the council to go towards. And then the only other thing I'll say to the North Riverfront Park is I hope to see the, the burning, the.
Fire pits.
Back on the plant at some point in the future.
It's still there.
Yeah.
This was kind of a, you know, condensed version, if we send out minutes to every meeting that we have, so. Oh, yes, my co-host here, Dave Weemer, Outer Island, I start to talk about that, we had a recommendation that some of the cabins were in bad, bad shape and Ryan did get a bid from one company to take down the cabin and get rid of it, demolish it, and it was like thirty-five or thirty-seven thousand dollars, which is totally, don't do it, mother nature will take care of it, I didn't say that, but.
Appreciate your honesty, Charlie.
But that's way too much money.
Thirty-seven thousand bucks?
I do have a question on those Outer Island leases, is there, when, and maybe Eric would know, when they lease an area, do you, do they have a plat that they're leasing?
No, there's numbers there.
They're staked.
Stakes, but, you know, which, it's kind of, you're the neighbor, you know, you've taken care of this portion for X mile years, that's kind of my boundary.
Okay, so, but if there's like a dispute between two neighbors, how does that get handled, do they go to the parks?
Not gonna, would we haven't had any major problems.
I couldn't recall it.
To Charlie's point, one thing I wanted to bring up, and I know we discussed this last year, one of the larger concerns we had as a committee was, we leased this land, so if somebody leases land, they're allowed to construct a structure, but if they don't maintain the structure and then they go ahead and discontinue their portion of the lease, the city is left with the responsibility of the structure and.
Cleanup.
Possible cleanup costs, so that was one of the issues that we tried to confront and hedge those costs last year, so I don't know if we were to move, if we review that, that's something we need to take into consideration.
That lease, I think we're using a new one, aren't we? Yeah, so the inspections, we wanted to do one early this year, but the river came up and we didn't do it, but you'll all be invited if you want to come out, official, unofficial meeting. Any other questions for me?
I don't have any.
Okay, hey, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, next on our discussion items, we have the boating infrastructure grant.
Tree advisory.
Tree, oh, excuse me, I skipped one, Tree Advisory Board Annual Report, sorry.
Me?
No.
Scott Zeiser, we are the Tree Advisory Board and on my committee, I am the chairperson and Robert Walker with Vice Chair, we have other members, Dave Hazel, Dale Smizer, Joyce Tager and Lisa Loak and she is our secretary, I think she was the lady here that had a little kid, so she had to leave, but everybody's attendance was, I was very impressed with, they all showed up here, stayed through the whole meeting, so I hats off to them and along with Patrick Moore, our City Forester, and Ryan Gorley, so what we do is we meet quarterly, we meet August, November, March and May, have about an hour and a half, two-hour meeting at five o'clock, sometimes it's in the quarters here, or if it's nice, we'll go to a park and have a meeting there. This year, we had two tree planting projects, one was this spring in Jefferson Street and then Perkins Park, we had a tree planting there, what we usually do is invite people, have different species that we want to plant and then get them involved and it's usually.
What was the date, it was Arbor Day or something like that?
This spring, so, and we partnership with Trees Forever. So, and we partnership with Trees Forever. We had a $10,000 grant this year to help us purchase trees with the city budget that we work with, and they are great partners. Trees Forever is an excellent source of, I guess, dollars to help us replenish our beautiful town of trees. This April of 2018, Burlington has been a Tree City USA for over 30 years, which is something to be very proud of. Other projects we've worked on are, we are improving our tree list for the residents that want to plant trees in the right-of-ways. There's different trees that come out, and obviously you heard the Emerald Ash Bore that eliminated all the ash trees. So the city has taken down a lot of trees, and they need to replenish our right-of-ways, and then we are redoing the right-of-ways. Some of the right-of-ways are so narrow, they don't really warrant a tree, a large tree in that area, so we're making the right-of-ways larger to accommodate this. Another one is called Treekeeper. If you want to go online, it's in the city website. Treekeeper is a site that you can identify every tree in the right-of-way of Burlington or the parks. So if somebody asks questions or they drive down the street, do not know what that tree is, all they have to do is pull Treekeeper up. They just pinpoint where that tree is. It will tell you species and genus. So that's on the website. Another small tidbit here is we are looking for one more member, and it has to be female due to, I think, the bylaws of our, our group. So we have to have so many female and male, so we lost a female. So we're looking at, for a female member to join our Trees Advisory Board. So before I leave or if I ask for any questions, I just want to commend, we are very fortunate to have a city forester in Burlington, Iowa, because there's only like eight in the state of Iowa. So we're very honored to have somebody like that, and of Patrick Moore, a young fellow that's growing and loves to be outdoors, and he is, has passion for this job. So I commend what we have to work with, and I think you guys should be very proud of them, too.
We're proud of you.
Yeah. Do you have any questions for myself, or Patrick, or Ryan?
No, I just echo your comments. Nice article in the paper on Patrick recently, too.
Agree. That was very nice, wasn't it? Yeah, it was. All right.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Great stuff.
Good stuff. We gotta have the trees. Who's that who speaks for the, the Lorax? That's right. Okay, number three, boating infrastructure grant. Charlie?
Charlie Nichols, Leo Foley with Beanster and Kim is also here, and he'll be speaking about this after me. So I wanted to touch base on our different funding programs for the riverfront right now. We have the flood mitigation grant, of course, and that's state funding. We have the Tiger Grant, that's federal funding. We're eligible for Great Places funding. If you remember from last year, we got Great Places designation, we can apply for funding from them for three years. That's state funding. And we also have a boating infrastructure grant, which is federal funding. Now, we've been awarded the Tier One Grant, which is for design only, up to 200,000, and after that, we can apply for a Tier Two Grant, which is up to 1.5 million for actual construction. In our riverfront plan that we developed as part of the flood mitigation project, our vision called for a floating boardwalk, pleasure docks, and then an upgraded restroom facility with some showers for those transient boaters. The thing to keep in mind for the boating infrastructure grant, and Leo will talk about this, is that there is a 25% match requirement for both the Tier One and the Tier Two. Now, we can't use federal dollars as our match, because that's a federal program which rules out the Tiger Grant. We can use state dollars to match it, though, and we are fairly confident that we can use the next phase of the flood project to provide the majority, if not all of the match. We haven't started design on that phase yet. We're looking at maybe pushing it back a year as we see our increment come in to fund that project. So it's all about how we time these projects and how we get all of the things to line up. The goal is not to spend city money, city funding on these projects, but to use the grants to play off each other, and just getting that to all work out is something that we'll have to work on. But Leo will go over a little bit more of that in his presentation here.
Leo? Thank you. Leo Foley, Beanster and Kim. We got the thing to switch. Okay. So what I wanted to go through today, and Charlie hit on it, the big grant, the conceptual plans, our potential cost share, Charlie hit on the federal versus non-federal, the Tier One scope, that's primarily what we're really needing to talk about today, then the Tier Two potential and the scope, and then schedule and funding. So we'll go back a little bit, and I'll go to the concept riverfront plan. This is the plan that was, we had the steering committee, and this is the plan that we kind of came up with, and it shows a lot of little bullets on things, and every conceptual plan changes the minute you start working on it. So we feel like we've stuck pretty good on the flood protection project and where we're at on, as somebody said, the north-south, but the east-west, we've got some work to do. Next one. Next one. Okay, so this just shows the intent of the type of pleasure dock that they're talking about. This is a serious dock where people could dock up to. We've had similar type projects that we've done these kind of docks. It takes a lot of design, it takes modeling, takes a lot of things. The Tier One Grant is primarily to do all the planning and to do the preliminary design so you know what you're about, so that now when you go to the Tier Two, you're talking real money, you're talking about what are we really going to do? So this one shows a little bit up close. Things I wanted to point out here is you see the port building, the green-roofed building that is shown there? That's a restroom facility. We put that in there because Big Grant loves to pay for those kind of facilities. We thought it could be a real amenity to that part of the riverfront. The reason, and everything on Big is all about transient boaters, boaters coming into Burlington. They get off their boat, where do they want to go shower and go to restroom? That's the kind of thing they wanted to do. Another point is the dock, the decking you see, the red decking down in the lower right-hand part of the picture. Again, we thought that's a tremendous amenity for the city, but boaters would get off their boat, they'd be able to take lunch over, do whatever they wanted to do over there. Big Grant will pay for that type of thing. Big Grant will even help, and what they have told me is they will use that as cost share. So when Charlie mentioned that the flood mitigation monies can cost share, if we get the next phase, and we maybe change Phase Six around now a little bit, and we do this upper end, and we do the tie-off right there, I believe that tie-off could be used to help pay for the protection for some of the Big Grant. And I've talked to the federal Fish and Wildlife people, and they seem to agree. We had other ideas on how to cost share, but they seem to be very much in favor of that. But we have to go forward with Phase Six. We cannot, if you don't go forward Phase Six, you're not going to have that cost share. So go to the next.
So as, as you're talking about that, the phase that we just did on the flood wall was called Phase Five.
Oh, sorry, yes.
We were using several projects that had occurred prior to that, CSO work that we've combined sewer separation work that we'd already done as some of our matches, and labeled those earlier phases in the schedule. Phase Six was, in the original design, what we submitted to the state, was designed to be two lift stations, two pumping stations?
Two lift stations, right.
To divert, to carry water over in case, to pump over in case you have a rain event or whatever that you need to pump out.
So you wouldn't have to do any temporary pumping and no ringing of manholes?
Which would put then the tie-offs from, say, what we're talking about, the north side of the port building there, going in, up to the railroad to block off the water at the head end, being a later phase. Given, with a couple of different things going on. One, the sales tax increment has been slower than was originally projected, so we're looking at a delay on the next phase. We've also, as we've looked at what are prioritizations, it seems to make sense to try to get that head end done because of the, just level of importance. We can, we can, on an interim basis, if an event occurs, we can rent machines to pump water over if we have to. Not preferable, but we can, more so than dealing with not having that wall complete on the north side. So we're looking at altering that scope of work and changing the order of things that are done. And if you can use that as a match and say that's our local contribution into this project, that's, that helps.
That will help. So the next one shows, this is just what was shown in the grant, and it shows that just to, just for the construction, you're talking about $3.1 million for the, for the dockage, the restroom, all of that. And then so Tier One, you, you really already, you have the state of Iowa and federal basically saying you are eligible for the Tier One, we will give you Tier One, but you have to kind of go through the process of an agreement. So that's why I showed you the Tier One is 200,000, the Tier Two is 1.5 million. Then I put other local, non-federal, some other money, whether it's flood mitigation money, whether it's any other type of non-federal money, would have to be used. What I wanted to make sure you're aware of, the, this was done in a, with no detail, so it's a very much of a guess at this point, a lot of the costs. Tier One is primarily, the reason the state and the federals give you that money is they want you to redo your cost estimate and give us some preliminary plans. So now we can tailor it a little bit to, as, as the city administrator said, so now we can tailor it. So, okay, we need flood protection, we need this big deck out on the front, and I think that will give you that cost share. So I'm thinking if we go forward with Tier One, we can do a lot of the things. And I've done this two other times. I've done this for Clinton and Dubuque, and the big people, Fish and Wildlife Service, are very easy to work with. They want to make this project go forward, so they're going to want to work with you. What they don't like is if, all of a sudden, they'd come back and you say, well, we decided not to do the docks, we were going to do, we're going to do the amenities building, and we're going to do something else, but we're not going to do, your dockage has to be there. So that, that's number one. Next, next slide. So this shows, what are we going to do with the Tier One money? The biggest thing is now they want to want details about bathymetry, meaning, meaning what does that channel look like, what does the flows look like, what does the survey look like right up against our new wall? We have some of that data that we've already done for the flood mitigation, but we need more. Geotechnical analysis. We've done some geotechnical just recently. So we, we have 70 or more moorings that show us what's going on. We're probably going to have to do a few out in the water. That's what that's about. Next thing is you need to know lighting, vessels, type of moorings, type of facility, ice, how does the ice come down and hit that? How is it moving up and down on the walls? That's all the kind of things that we're going to do. Next step. And that's, that could be done by November. Then you need to do the preliminary design. Now, once you've figured out what all the forces are, what all the problems are, what, what kind of concept drawings do we have to come up with? And we, we think you have to get about 35% design. So that means that when you're looking at it, it's not ready to go out to bid, but it's certainly something that everybody knows exactly what it is. We think this schedule shows you primarily how we can do that, and it goes down to the bottom where it says initial final design, initiate final design in March 2020. And that means after you would get the Tier Two Grant. You don't do any of that work starting in March unless you get Tier Two. Go to the next one. And then once you got the Tier Two, and we scheduled this out a ways on purpose, the reason the schedule is shown, and this is what the state wants right now, they're looking for this schedule. And what we're doing is pushing this out so that August 2021, the construction phase, that's fiscal year 2022, when we think Phase Six will be going on. So to me, this looks like a reasonable schedule. So now, how do you fund it? So like we said, the docking, we use the Big Grant, if you could, if you can use Great Places, local funding, or most, most likely flood mitigation. If flood mitigation matches up, if something happens, let's just say you don't get flood mitigation because your tax increment never goes up, something happens, you'd still be on the hook for 25% of the $200,000 grant. You have to pay 25% of that. We probably could get away with telling them that we've done, if we start doing design on Phase Six, that the design of Phase Six, there'd be enough crossover, you could get by that way. But I just wanted you to be aware, the city is responsible for 25% that would be non-federal dollars. If, if things don't go right. I, I can almost tell you with Great Places, with the Tiger Grant, you're going to be able to, you're going to be able to make this work. And I think the $200,000 from the state now would really help push you along. The other thing that the federal government's doing now a lot with the state and the DOT arena, Department of Transportation, is they're doing what's called the Federal Swap Program. So they more or less somehow take federal money in, and then they use it in other places, and then the state has their money they use in different, are you familiar with the program?
Oh, I'll propose to learn some of the rules. I wouldn't even pay attention to you, but-
Federal swap.
So take it personal, he does it to me all the time.
So you don't have to do the federal bidding rules?
So you can, so even with, even with Tiger, if there's, if you're going to do a streets project, let's just say you're going to do streets project, you might be able to use some of the federal monies to do streets project that you were going to use with the Tiger Grant. Then you'd have local money available. So I think if, if we go forward with the Tier One Grant, I think we'll very easily be able to find a way to make sure that you're able to cost share and not have to come up with cash out of the city.
That would be-
What happens, I mean, the biggest risk is if you don't, if we're not able to do the next portion of the sales tax flood wall improvements. If that's the case, I would think that we would be having a discussion, do you want to finish at least the wall on the north end and use TIF financing to do it? I think that would be a realistic conversation you would have. I assume that that increment will still happen, it's just, right now, it's much more delayed than what was in the original schedule, and it goes along with what our sales tax collections revenues have been over the last couple of years, our hotel motel tax revenues have been over the last couple of years. They're just slower.
I do think this would be a dynamite project for that riverfront.
Oh, man, you're not kidding.
Just dynamite.
The biggest risk that you have now is if those monies don't come through and you're not able to do this project, you have to make it with, using some match from that sales tax project. To make this project happen, you'd have to fund our contribution in some other way, or you'd have to decide not to move forward with the Tier Two.
The Tier Two, right.
And then you would have a cost share on the Tier One planning that we would have to make good on, which is in that 50,000?
50,000 range, and that's assuming we don't even go forward on the, on the, on the flood mitigation Phase Six design. If you even went forward on design-
You might cover that.
You'd be clear.
What about the Great Places designation? I mean, that's a couple hundred grand. So that's going to go towards that?
See, I think you-
Oh, there we go.
I'm going to be talking about that at our next meeting. Great Places has $1 million for the state of Iowa. There's no cap on how much we can ask for, but they strongly encourage you to keep your amount in the 200,000 to 400,000 range so they can spread it around. Great Places could be a match for the boat dock if you wanted to put it for docking facilities. In the past, we've discussed splash pad seating with shade structures and then an amphitheater. We think that the Tiger Grant could do the splash pad, so Great Places money wouldn't need to cover that, but that'll be a discussion for-
So if Tiger went to splash pad, this is a conversation that's going to have to be had, but Tiger goes to splash pad, we take that money, contribute it to visitors' boat dock, and then we can use that as a match to go towards the boating infrastructure grant.
Right. This is all assuming we get the Great Places grant itself to apply for it.
Okay.
That's what I meant by the swap program. You said it a little better than I did. You might have to do a little-
I was listening to you.
You might have to do a little bit of swapping around, but I'm telling you, we were very successful in Dubuque and very successful in Clinton. I worked for the Corps of Engineers for 17 years. They are not flexible, they are not always easy to move things around, but for some reason, this program is extraordinarily flexible. I was surprised when I, when I first, because I managed both those projects, and I was really shocked that it seems like they want, they want to make their projects go forward.
You're expecting this flexibility to continue?
I'm expecting it to continue.
Outstanding.
Generally, the, the way rules are set up and how they're interpreted, once, once a program's set up one way, they tend to continue to act that way. You may deal with another department that's next door to them that has another grant program, and they'll be completely different, but they'll stay, they'll, it's just the way philosophy is running.
Your agreement will go through the city with, to the state, and then the state has an agreement with the federal government. You don't even get involved with that, with that part of it. But that's what, primarily, the only thing they're asking for us, is they've looked at the application, and they said, everything looks good, but we know the schedule's crazy. Give us a reasonable- Give us a reasonable schedule and we'll go forward. So I was gonna provide them this schedule and see where they're at. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chuck, where'd we get you from again? Anyways, somewhere here in Iowa. You guys good?
Yes.
Number four, proposed affordable housing project, seven oh five Maple Street. How you doing?
City council members, uh, my name is Richard Sove, I'm president of Landover Corporation. I'm here to talk to you a little bit about Salter School and the proposed redevelopment of the Salter School. I hope that you've all received a little information packet that I forwarded. A couple things in the packet I'd like to talk about. We, we had, I had a rendering of the building in there. That was a rendering from the project that was submitted a couple of years ago. Actually, a project that was supported by the system city, did not get funding. A couple of, that particular picture is not what we would probably build. All of our billings, uh, in the few future, now and in the future, all have balconies. I always think that that's a necessity in, in all of the projects we're doing. And then at the back of the package, there was a, a list of the different projects I, I had done with my partners. We listed three projects there. There are two additional projects which we've got funding for, they're under, under construction right now, one is in Cedar Rapids, the other one is in, uh, Otomoa. So the, these are, these are, there are five projects we've done together. TWG is the company that will be, be my partner on this, on this particular project. Some of you are familiar with the affordable housing program, I, I think, and, and this particular project that we propose. So basically, I'd just like to ask if there are any questions about the project.
I really don't have anything.
What are you, what are you asking for from us?
Well, we, we, we submitted a, a proposal to redevelop the Apollo School, and the city council decided they didn't want that particular project to be affordable housing. And so I, um, I, I, I came back and touched and talked to Jim, and, but basically, we decided that maybe we should kind of get the pulse of, of the city in terms of if they're interested in an affordable housing per project at this time, before we make a formal proposal.
When this project was brought forward by you and a different partner, three years?
Three years ago.
Three years ago, uh, you were looking to construct about fifty units?
Fifty-two units.
So at that point, that was fifty-two units of, um, primarily elderly?
No, it was, it was.
Or no?
I, I believe it was family.
I thought it was elderly.
I thought it was elderly.
I thought it was elderly.
It was, it was, oh, you're right. It was, it was elderly, and since then, since then's what's happened to the program, uh, two years ago, the, the state has decided that there's too much elderly housing out there in the state, and they've, they've now made, given incentives to developers to provide, uh, family housing. That's, that's their, that's their preference, and if you, if you try to do an affordable per project, uh, it's, it's not likely you're going to be approved by the state at, at this point.
When this project was originally done, so three years ago, the council approved a, a package on this, we used our enhanced tax abatement, the ten-year scale that we have, seven years, a hundred percent, then seventy-five, fifty, twenty-five percent, uh, tax abatement. That was enough to get your local match, the points for your local match, uh, which was a requirement that they, to really be competitive, that you have that as part of a project, that you also needed a letter of support at that point.
Yes, we did.
The council, when those discussions went on for a senior housing project, uh, for the redevelopment of that site, had expressed an interest in moving forward. It was not a unanimous level of support?
I didn't say anything.
Part of the question is now, would you look at a different, or a comparable project, but you've, you've really changed some different, some dynamics here. Uh, you have a different council composition. Uh, the project now is not senior housing, but family housing. And our market is different than it was three years ago. Uh, you're still coming forward with a position where the local cash match that you need to be able to get, you can be, satisfy with the, the tax abatement.
Sure.
Uh, but they still need that letter of support to make this project have.
Sure.
Be something that's viable.
Yes, that's true.
Wait, what, what kind of a housing are we talking about? Family?
Mixed, mixed, uh, family.
Okay, I just, so this, is this old, an old, this was the previous?
Yeah, this is the previous.
This is all old stuff in our pocket, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, are you, you're looking at the, the elevation of the?
No, I was looking at our resolution approving request, it's in our, just a discussion item.
Yes. What's the price point of the family housing complex that you're considering?
Cost, cost of construction?
No, price per unit for a rental, is it market rate?
Price per unit, no, it's not market rate. Affordable housing is, uh, typically, the, the, the overall program is sixty percent of the AMI, um, that's, that's the, that's the breaking point. Certain programs, we can actually go below sixty percent, sometimes forty percent, but basically, the program's a sixty percent program. So sixty percent of the average median income of the city is the, is the actual, um, income requirement, but they can't, they can't be above that.
And how long is that requirement for?
Forever.
Oh, it's in perpetuity?
Yeah.
Other questions?
With the, I think that Richard wanted to come forward and see if there was some, was level of interest from the council in, in entertaining a proposal on a project or not, before he put a significant amount of time into developing that.
Yeah, for formal proposal, I, I think, you know, the, I, I, some of you know what affordable housing is, it's, it's a, you know, it's a program that's been around for twenty-five years. Every, almost every city and village in this, in the state are, are trying to get these projects, because almost everywhere in the state, we have a need for affordable housing. I think the la, last survey that was done in, in Des Moines County was that there was a need for seven hundred units, and it's just, it's, it's not here, it's not being built.
Hey, I just, I just want you to know that, uh, I hope you don't take this personal, because I think you're a great guy, man, this is not, this has nothing to do with you. It's, uh, it's not, it doesn't change it for me, it doesn't change it for me. I don't like, I don't wanna stack 'em and pack 'em in that area, I think it's a bad move. I just, I'm, I'm looking further on down the road, I don't like what I see. That's just me, and I'm just trying to do the best that I can for my community. I don't, I just don't like it, and I don't wanna put a unit there. Um, I just don't, so that's where I am, whether it's old people or regardless.
I'm with you, Shane, I think we have a need for better jobs, higher paying jobs instead of affordable housing.
I actually disagree. I think that, um, if, if any part of our community needs to see an, a spark of redevelopment, it's that part. Ultimately, people are gonna live in places that they're comfortable. So the neighborhood itself, um, I, I think that it's, it's an ideal location to see this type of development. I would be in favor of seeing what your proposal would look like. So that's, that's kind of my perspective. I know you disagree, but like I said.
Yeah, that's what it's all about, man, it's all good. But yes, I disagree.
Um, what other, what other projects have you done that are affordable? Are you working on some that are affordable housing? No, those aren't, I, those are all, like, senior, I was thinking.
Most of the, other projects in Iowa, you mean?
Or wherever you're.
Yeah, well, my, uh, my partner, uh, T, T W G, we, we've done, we've done five projects, like I just said, with three, three are on the list, two, two more are under construction right now, in Otomoa and Cedar Rapids.
Yes, yes, but I was just thinking, outside of the realm of the, the senior, like, senior apartments and things like that, have you picked up any family affordable housing projects? Like the one you're proposing?
The, um, the, well, like I said, my partner has done probably fifty of these projects that are all around, around the Midwest over the last fifteen years. That's why they're my partner.
Right.
Me personally, I'm, I'm, I actually do primarily market, market rate project for sale.
So I guess, what is your interest in having it be the affordable housing? Why, why is that, why, why do you wanna focus on that, I guess?
Cause that's what can be, that's what can be built and funded. That's, these are, these are tax credit projects funded, funded, it's a federal program administered by, by the state, and, uh, like I just said, it's, it's a very, very attractive program for most communities. I mean, we're, we're, there's like five projects under, under construction, Cedar Rapids right now, we're, we're working on a project in Dubuque, we're working on a project in McPolka. You know, it's, 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 it's a very good, and I know you're, you're obviously not familiar with this program, but it's, it is, is a very, very popular.
Are you talking about affordable housing?
Affordable.
I've lived in affordable housing.
Oh, you have?
I have.
All right.
So that's why, that's why I have a deep interest in it, because I have not had good experiences with affordable housing.
Why, why didn't you, what, what was your, what was your bad experience?
Um, the other residents, the environment itself was very bad. So that's why I, I'm very skeptical, and, and I would like affordable housing to be attractive and safe and, you know, good for families. So that's my main concern.
Well, have, have you seen a, a recently built affordable housing project?
I've seen some that have been redone, and I can't, I can't speak to whether it's, it's good or bad.
Well, the part, the, the projects we build, the projects that are being built today by the state are comparable to any, any type of market rate apartments out. In fact, the only thing you can't do is have granite countertops, that's it. Everything else, those, those apartments are exactly the same type of apartments that we build all, all over. The, I don't know what your experience was, but, but did, did you have onsite management?
Yes.
You did, was it good?
Not necessarily.
Apparently not, right. All of our buildings have onsite management, uh, we, we, we manage like, I think, almost three thousand units right now. We manage like six, six, six hundred units in Iowa right now. So we would have onsite management, and we don't, we haven't had any problems with our tenants at all.
I didn't know how, I guess, as far as the affordable housing goes, how the, the police calls, if they are higher, or what that, what that compares to. Cause in the, in the, in the, where I used to live, there was, you know, daily at least.
For what, for what type?
Just disturbances or things like that.
Well, those type of people should be kicked out.
Well, that's.
You know, that's not.
And that, and that gets into another situation about affordable housing, and, and it's, it's a very difficult situation, it's a difficult topic to discuss. I do have another question though about, cause right now, um, a business owns that property, how would that even, how would that work?
So, I, yes, they own it, but the gentleman lives there, so. I'm assuming you've spoken to the current owner?
Sure.
And there's a, there's an agreement in place, verbal or non-verbal, that says that if this was to go through, that you would have the opportunity to purchase the property, right?
Sure.
Okay, I didn't know if you've been.
One thing I just wanna bring up, one thing I really like about this is tearing down and rebuilding provides incredible incentive for them to ensure that their properties and the maintenance and control of tenants are gonna take care of it and not be the person. And I know that because I have my property, so I go in and I redo a home, I'm very picky about who I allow to live in that home, um, in order to make sure that I don't have people coming in that are gonna destroy or to be a problem for the neighbors or things like that, so.
Do you have any affordable housing?
Yeah, it's not, it's not, it's not public housing.
No, I get that.
You know, this, this is privately owned.
Yes.
And we, we own these and manage them, and.
I get that.
Yeah, I.
I understand.
I, I would like to hear your proposal, I'd like you to flesh it out, because there's, there is some affordable housing downtown right now, uh, above, above some of the buildings, and those are very nice homes, they're very well taken care of, and they're with good residents. Our residents deserve better homes in this area. I lived in a real, for lack of a better word, crap hole when I first, when I first moved out of my folks' house, and, uh, but it's what I could afford, and if I can find, find a better place to live, you darn sure I would've taken care of it. So I think, I won't speak for anybody else, Matt said he'd like to hear it, I'd like to hear it, uh, and, you know, get a little more detail on the ground, and then we can go from there. That's my, my personal thought on it.
Right on. Hey, let's, uh, let's, let's go ahead and get this, I just wanna make this clear, though. I'm not against this project because it's lower in housing or, or, um, that, that's, that's not my issue. My issue is I think there's too many units in that area, that's, that's my issue. So, has nothing to do with who the clientele is, that's not even my concern. All right. Uh, peanut butter, where are you at on that? You wanna hear the proposal?
Yeah, I was hearing, yeah.
You're interested in hearing?
You're what I'm at, yep.
I'm out, so I'm just letting you know where I'm at, so you don't even have to give me eye contact, you're wasting time with me, man. But hey, it's not personal.
You're always straight with me.
It's not personal, you go to Burlington, we, we welcome you, make sure you gas up here, Burlington, not West Burlington, don't take it out on me. But, uh, that's just where I am, I just don't feel good about it, I don't wanna, I don't wanna play around with you on that.
Um, no, not, not for me, but.
I'd like to hear it.
Okay, so we've got three that.
The eyes have it.
Well, it's.
Well, at least you hear it out.
It puts it into your court as to how you wanna proceed and.
Convince us.
Okay, well, I might, I might want to, uh, I might wanna talk to you further if, if I could at some point.
Yeah, at some point, not this evening, but yeah.
Okay, great, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, brings us to number five, Parks Endowment Fund.
I'm gonna talk on this, just wanted to give an update to council on something that we've been working on from the Parks Department level for some time now, something that we've had discussions on, especially, I guess, as we move through budgets and they get tighter and realize, in order to sustain and maintain the parks, uh, in the future, outside funding uh, probably be critical to maintain the great park. So, um, through the Parks Department, we've worked on putting together some information and then working with the Community Foundation of Des Moines County on what a Parks and Rec foundation, or Parks and Rec Endowment Fund could be, and what it, uh, would mean for the parks. So, uh, we have this brochure that we handed out, can run through on the overhead here as well, just the purpose to create, provide a permanent endowment fund, ensuring the maintenance and sustainability of our park system and recreational opportunities in Burlington in perpetuity. The endowment fund is a permanent self-sustaining force of funding, assets are invested with a portion of the fund's value paid out each year to support its purpose, with the principal sum generally not used appreciation in excess of this. Annual distribution is retained in the endowment fund, so it can grow and support future generations. Setting up an endowment fund is probably, likely not gonna help us in the next few years, even ten years or twenty years, it would help future generations and, uh, help the Parks and Recreation Department down the road.
Not even in twenty years?
Unless we get a, a large donation, I, and Jason will talk about it here as well, but generally about four percent of the, uh, uh, amount in the fund can be used annually. Uh, so if we have a ten thousand dollar startup, that's four hundred, four hundred and fifty dollars that could be used with that funding, and as it grows, that number that you can use annually grows as well. So it can be gifts of cash, uh, living trusts, memorial gifts, real estate, others. There are federal tax deductions that go with this, as well as a twenty-five percent tax credit for, uh, the gift through the end of Iowa, Iowa tax credit. And I wanna kind of turn it over to Jason to talk a little bit more on the actual endowment, our Community Foundation of Des Moines County, but, um, we just wanted to put this forward to you to get any input or, uh, information, uh, from you, but also let you know what we're looking to do through the Parks Department and working with the Community Foundation on trying to find sustainable funding sources for future, uh, maintenance and amenities within the parks as, especially as budgets grow tighter.
Yeah, so, uh, we love our parks in this community, right? It, it's one of the, the great things that this community has invested in for a long period of time, and the Community Foundation of Des Moines County, um, I, I'm here representing them because, uh, the, the partnership has a contract to manage the, the day-to-day affairs of the, uh, Community Foundation, but its sole purpose is to raise. But its sole purpose is to raise permanent funds for all sorts of charitable activities in our community. So when you think about an endowment fund, it's, it's intended to be a permanent source of funding that's invested and, and you attempt to beat the rate of inflation with those investments so that they can continue to grow over time and then every year distribute from that for whatever the cost is established for. And you can, you can set up a fund in the name of your family, you can name it up in the name of the charity of your choice, you can name it up in a, in a general fund that goes to support a variety of activities. So what we've talked about with the Parks Department is having this fund specifically for the city parks, using kind of the, the Parks Advisory Board as kind of the, the group that helps guide and direct what those dollars would be used for. But this is, the endowment fund through Community Foundation is so powerful because you can get a 25% State of Iowa tax credit against that. So if you donate $100,000 because you really love the parks, that $100,000 will produce money each and every year into perpetuity to support the parks and you get a $25,000 State of Iowa tax credit. And so Mayor McCambell, that 25% tax credit could be yours. It could be. But the other thing, if you have this set up, is people who appreciated the parks during their lifetime, it gives them an opportunity to, to give to that when they're no longer with us. They could certainly do it when they're alive as well, but.
How come this, how do we get this information out there? I mean, is this, what is this, just a once a year deal? Because I remember talking about this, but what do we talk about, once a year? Is that the only time we ever talk about this?
This, this hasn't been created yet. This is.
What's, okay, what's the fund, what's the fund that we talked about that we've been using before, before this one then?
We use starker funds for projects.
Okay, I'm getting, I'm getting the next step. All right.
That's an. That's an established fund. This is something we're looking to create.
All right. I'm combining them. Please.
Well, same type of thing though, right? And when we look at our community and we look at the good that the, the witty fund has done, as just one example, imagine if we had a witty fund just for the parks, right? And that's what, really what I think they're trying to attempt to create with this.
Yeah, isn't the Starker Foundation just for parks?
I don't know about that.
Hey, I, if someone wants to donate money for our parks, I'm never gonna put a cap on it, so.
Yes, let's.
Yeah, no doubt.
I don't see why we're discussing it, just go for it.
And for the record, I, I thought you were gonna say.
Well said, well said. What are we even talking about this? It's for get or done.
I established our park foundation in Rockford 39 years ago. It's brought in over 50 million so far.
Wow.
It does things the tax dollar cannot do. It's a good deal.
Absolutely.
Said, I don't know why we're, I'm good, I'm in.
Why don't you just have Dave come up and say what he said? You could have sat down. You could have been relaxing.
I'm outsourcing everything to you in the future, Dave.
You guys, questions? I just wish there was a, a better way though, with the witty foundation, with all the, with the ones that we do have. Yeah. To just have, because I, I think a lot of people don't know about that these are available. Yes, sir. Yeah, could you come up to the podium?
We need $10,000 to get this thing started.
I'll give some money to help it get started. I'm a park person, you know that.
Yes, sir.
I set up our park foundation in Rockford, as I say, in 1979. It has a foundation and its director actually has an office in the Park District Office. And they are a part of the Park District and they get their benefits there. And they write the grants for it. That's the kind of a person you need. When my phone rang, my penalty was $5. This goes in your coffee fund, I'm sorry.
Actually, we don't have a coffee fund and I can't take your $5. Nick will take it though.
Hey, you guys do a great job.
Thanks, sir.
Partly, we wanted to let, just let you know, this is something we're looking to do and wanted to get any input. We're gonna start promoting this throughout the community, different groups, and then start to look at different ways to have activities or kickoffs and fundraisers and things to try and promote this more, but wanted to let council know before we kind of start this full gear.
Brian, Brian commented that we need 10 grand to get this started. Is that something that we're looking at taking from the city for the seed money or?
No, we're looking at donations and.
Donations to raise it.
Well, if, if I can choose my dunk tank.
Yeah, I think, I think I can set that up.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll get dunked for this, to start that out.
And right now, I'm on the County Conservation Foundation Board. If you want to establish a board for this, I'll volunteer to be on it too. I'm a fundraiser.
He's a fundraiser. All right. Burlington's got something that no other community has. We've got Dave Weemer. Okay. We're gonna wrap it up then tonight? Mr. Tisland, do you have anything on the way out? Okay. Council lady?
Yes. Symphonic Blast was wonderful Sunday. Hopefully everyone had a chance to check that out. Perfect weather, perfect music. So everyone that attended that and really enjoyed the parks, think about setting up a memorial gift for those parks to support them. Gus Macker, make sure you've got your basketball entries in for that. Shane?
That's right. We've got a city hall team that we're trying to win, so we're feeling pretty good.
Ballers.
City Hall are ballers, so we're feeling, we're feeling pretty good about it.
And free swim tomorrow at Dankwart Park for kids, pizza.
We have subs for that, right?
We don't.
We've got no subs, man. We're the City Hall are ballers.
What do you mean, we don't? You're on.
Yeah, closer remarks, Mr. Phillips?
You know, my, my thing would be this, this weekend, Friday Fest, get a chance to soak your councilman. Matt and Annie and, and I are going, your, Linda's out of town.
I'm out of town.
Shane's got a bad back, but he's gonna whip up the crowd. It's gonna be a donation based deal. We all have different charities we're raising money for. You can come and dunk us in the dunk tank. And I'm telling you, if you got a weak arm, you better bring it because there's a lot of meat to move right here, so. I'm gonna be berating the people in the crowd to try to get them to donate, so.
The only thing I got is I saw an interesting commercial. And normally, I don't endorse anybody or anything from this chair, but I'm gonna do it tonight. I'm gonna break my rule. Domino's is running a special right now. They said if you run over a pothole on your way to their house, you can just call them and they'll go ahead and fill it for you. So I'm encouraging all the, all the citizens of Burlington, not West Burlington, just the citizens of Burlington, I'm encouraging you to order a pizza tonight so you don't have to lie about it. Let them know what street you live on. We're gonna get all our roads taken care of. I'm feeling good about this. Mayor Pro Tem?
Oh, I don't have anything tonight, thank you.
Okay. Councilman? City manager, Assistant City Manager, Nick McGregor?
Nick, here's your, here's your Kiwanis fee. Your fee there.
Yeah.
Just you, we put out a Facebook message and put out a press release today. Mount Pleasant Street Bridge is scheduled to come down Monday. We have pre-construction meeting tomorrow. Also, the Osborne Street is also something that will be closed at times during construction, mostly during demolition of the bridge. The bridge deck will have to come down over top of Osborne. We will try and get those releases out when that street is closed.
How long will it take them to take that down?
Take down? I have no idea. Large, some of that will be dependent upon BNSF trains and when they're able to get scheduled, you know, over top of the tracks and then moving that, but we'll, I'll know more tomorrow.
What's your detour route?
The detour route for Mount Pleasant Street Bridge being closed is Central to Highway 34 to Curran and vice versa. As far as Osborne, when that closure happens, I would say North Central probably to Oak would be the detour being used, but I'd have to look at that a little bit closer.
I think it's past the Fornose House and then cut around.
Yeah, that's it.